Matt, you're muted.
Let's start that again. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Suckers meeting for Mondays, December 6th, 2021 to order. By legislative action as well as executive order, this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid fashion. And we will go to item number one. That's a pledge of allegiance. Charlie, yes, it's traditional, or would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. Item two, public forum. Limited to three minutes on any item on the agenda. I know we do have a representation here. I think you're all here for the presentation and the request about the memorial, the Gulf War Ontario Memorial. If anybody want to address the board prior to us receiving that presentation and discussing, now would be the time, or you can at the close, you could also participate. Okay, hearing none. I don't see anything from the Zoom call. Anyone? No hands raised? No one looking to do anything yet? Trey, we're seeing anything? Nothing in chat? Okay.
Sounds like it go.
Sounds like it go to me. It's right. Item three, approving minutes. Three dot one would be the November 15th, 2021 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Someone.
End of second.
Checking.
Comments, questions, additions, deletions, et cetera? I had none.
I have nothing.
I'm all set.
Okay, let me try your minds. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, it's staying recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Three dot two, the November 19th, 2021 Capitol Budget Meeting. Is there a motion?
Some move.
End of second.
Second.
Comments, questions, changes, additions, deletions? I had none? Anyone? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to refuse myself. I left two thirds of the way through. I missed the back end of the meeting.
Good. Okay, that motion carries. Item four, Town Engineer, Dennis Plazek, four dot one, discuss and take possible actions to award bid number two dash 2122, Route 77 Pedestrian Improvement Project and authorize first agreement to enter into a contract for the project. Morning, Dennis.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so we did put out to bid the construction of the Route 77 pedestrian improvement project. And we received six bids and the lowest responsible bidder was Colossal Concrete. We did receive approval from DOT upon review of the bids to award the contract to Colossal, and now I'm bringing it to you to officially award the contract.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dennis. This, at the glacial pace of municipal governments, this has been, we've been about two and a half years on this, Dennis?
Yeah, it's probably a little longer, yeah.
With significant challenges relative to the state process. And remember, this is grant, there's grant money involved in this, et cetera. But this, I'm thrilled that we're finally getting this, we're at this stage. Probably not going to happen until the spring, as I understand, but
That's correct.
But just to have this corridor much safer for travel, particularly for our, our, our school students, the Adams Middle School students who are often traversing that area to get to a variety of locations just north of 95. So I'm thrilled. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, well, my only question is, this is a new name for me in, in Gulf for Doing Business. Have we used these folks before? I assume you followed through and happy with their performance and that type of thing?
Yeah, so they, they are a qualified bidder through the state for work done in similar fashion. I, I do actually have a personal experience with them. They did the site work for the Branford Fire Department site when I was overseeing that project as Town Engineer in Branford. So they are a responsible bidder with experience doing this type of work.
Where are they located? Their home office?
I believe it's New Britain. Bristol or New Britain. I'm not sure exactly which one.
I have no.
I had a comment, there's a bid analysis attached from the design engineer, which I thought was extremely informative. You know, we tend to ask the same questions. We say, why is this the low bid? Is it a red flag? Who are these people? You know, are they reputable? Are they financially responsible? And all those things were, were addressed by the, the design engineer. So I thought that was very useful. And in fact, on, on future projects, when, when things come before us, I would love to see something like that followed, even if it's just fill in the blanks kind of a thing, just to make sure that, that all these things were addressed. It saves us from, you know,
Asking this new question.
Yeah, at the 11th hour. So I appreciated that. And that answered all my questions.
Great. Thank you. So I, I also saw this. Very pleased to see it. One thing that they, they gave it a sort of what they call a bid evaluation in it, right? They, one thing that I, I'd like to see was the, although the low bid was approximately 10% lower than the opinion of probable cost, which is what they thought the project was going to be. Their unit prices seem reasonable, so.
Yeah.
And, Janice, are we approving just a base bid this morning?
Well, you have the, you have the, the award of the bid to Colossal, and then your next item, I believe, is to approve authorization for the, you know, the agreement between us and the state for the project.
That's right. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And second, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your mind. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, stay. That motion carries. Item four dot two, consider take possible action to enter into an authorized decision to new town state agreement on the Route 77 Pedestrian Improvement Project for federal funding for the project. Is there a motion?
I'll make that one.
Second.
Second.
And any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, stay. Here we go. Motion carries. Thank you. Item five, Economic Development Director, Sherry Cody. I think we talked about this a while ago. I know Sherry and I have been planning on doing this, which is to make this a monthly feature, to get a report from Sherry relative to what's going on in economic development, including the, you know, the traditional economic stuff, and then also anything that's happening in some of the, any of the potential developments that are happening in the land use department. So Sherry will represent those that are now a matter of public record. There are some that still can't be disclosed, but.
So are there any of those that we should consider an executive session that are large enough that we might want to?
There are, there are a couple coming up.
So she knows that she didn't go weekend?
Okay.
I mean, I'd love to know about those, you know, leading up to it. So if there's anything we should know about.
We can. All right. Sherry, what's that? Your monthly update?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll start with our signage project. So our Economic Development Commission has been working for many years. It started really when Brian McGloan was here. They had formed a subcommittee of the EDC to install welcome signs along our six exit ramps. Four of those have been installed and they are working on installing the next two. It requires a couple of different contractors, one to build and install the sign and one to lay some gravel underneath the sign for maintenance. You had approved funding back in September under ARC funds to, to take care of the rest of those signs. The committee is also now working on internal wayfinding signs. So they're, they're busy doing that. In terms of development, there are a couple of projects percolating on the Sullivan property out by Tractor Supply. There are three developers right now looking at doing some, something over there. It probably won't end up being three developments. But there's a commercial, two commercial properties and, or two commercial projects and one residential. So those I can't really give many details on right now. What you probably have heard about is Hubbard Road and that 100 unit affordable housing project that is under an 830G statute. That will be two separate buildings. Right now, they are in front of planning and zoning for a subdivision approval on that. That would include some handicap accessible units, 100 units in total, with 30 of them being affordable. You've also probably heard about the 405 Woodfield development. That will be market rate or really kind of high end town homes. Three buildings there with three to four bedroom townhouses, two car garages on the ground level, including elevators. And so they're working through the process now. There's a planning, there's a public hearing with planning and zoning on December 15th.
Excuse me, Sherry. Where 405, is that the former paving company?
Yes. Yes. So on Friday, hopefully everyone here knows that we had a holiday tree lighting on the green. It went off really, really well. Big thank you to the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring that. We again had the Sarah Texas tuners perform, the Adams Middle School was there. And then this year, we added two nursery schools, the North Guilford Nursery School and the Community Nursery School with a lot of little ones singing some songs. And then our main performer was Stephanie Stiefel Williams, who is a Guilford resident. So I think that, two more things. So business retention and expansion meetings. Matt and I have started meeting with some of our bigger businesses just to make, to check in and make sure that they're doing okay. If there's anything that we can be helping them with. So far, so good. I won't go into details just because I don't have permission from those businesses to, to talk about what, what they've told us. But no red flags at the moment, and we will continue to, to plan those and help out any way that we can, obviously. Recently, we launched a holiday gift guide. So this was in partnership with the Shoreline Chamber. Again, we have, we did a 30-page digital gift guide with 27 businesses participating, really well received by those businesses. And it's just a digital gift guide that people can click on links and purchase online or go and, and buy items from the businesses. I will update you on just a few new businesses in town. We have a new boutique over in Strawberry Hill area, Raven Rose Boutique. A new business on Water Street, All Eyes On You. We did a ribbon cutting for them a little while. And then over on River Street, you've probably driven by the Healing Salt Cave. It's a really cool place. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it's pretty neat to have a salt cave in town. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Gary, we hear so much about the need for workers and that type of thing. Is there any specific program that, that we can do or are doing that, that our employers having any of those kinds of issues? I mean, it seems to be a, a local, state, and even national issue with finding employees, especially in the service trades and that type of thing. Is there anything in that direction that you've been working on?
So that's a really good question, and you're absolutely right. All of our businesses really are, are hit with that same issue, especially our retailers. They're struggling. Some of our businesses have had to adjust their hours to be open because of the lack of staffing. So we've talked about possibly putting a job board on our website to announce those openings. The challenge with that would be up key maintenance, and also do we have the workers who were going to view those job postings and then apply for them, right? So that's something that, that I've been thinking about. Secondly, I do direct our businesses to the Workforce Alliance, which has programs in place. They're out of New Haven to see if, if they can be of assistance. And then thirdly, I've been in touch with a group called Iris, which you've probably heard about, trying to resettle refugees to see if there are possible openings, job openings for any of those people that move into the area that, you know, that they could find jobs. So that's also something that, that I've been working on.
Over the years, it, it's always been a little bit hit or miss, but there was some discussion with Board of Ed regarding high school students and entry level or, or internships or that, that type of thing. I, I don't know if that is in the cycle anymore or not, especially with COVID, but I, I do remember over the years, periodically, we would have programs like that available for workforce type situations.
I can certainly look into that. I am not aware of any programs at the moment, but that may just be, may not knowing.
Because I know they have the community service part of the education cycle, but you know, some, some of these jobs, especially, I, I know we have more and more laboratories and that type of thing as internships or whatever. You know, I think that could be valuable on both sides, so.
Agreed, yes.
Sherry, I don't know whether you can share this with us, but can you tell us anything about what's going into the former Centro Restaurant?
Yes, and all I really know is what I've read and everybody else has read on Facebook. But it looks like, and I don't have confirmation of this, Prime Steakhouse, which would be their second location. I believe they're located in Hampden at the moment. I've stopped by there many times to try to talk to someone, and every time I do, there's, there's no one in there. So I keep working on that.
Didn't the liquor permit sign have a, a local business name or something?
Yes.
Yes, but it, but it looks like it's a business behind it.
Oh. The town. Okay, all right. More to come. Yeah, we hate to see vacancies on the green like that.
They, I don't know if you walk by and look in the windows when they work black now, but they, they got it the entire, just moving.
Well, I know, that's the worry, that they got it and then plans change.
Well, I have it. The landlord is Todd Taylor, who owns many of those shops down there. And it is, it's my understanding that he's a partner in that particular business in addition to being the building owner. So I think he's got a pretty vested interest in making sure that doesn't save anything, I would imagine. Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Sherry?
Thank you. And I do think this is a great idea to not only keep this board apprised of, of what's going on, but hopefully the community, it'll be another opportunity for them to weigh in.
Great. Thank you. And I think Sherry, we'll make this the, the first meeting of the month, probably be the appropriate time to do that. If we didn't, if I didn't work on the, the third one. Sherry, thank you very much for joining us this morning. The second, second piece here is discuss and take possible action on the usage of American Rescue Plan funds for a welcome sign. I had the new roundabout. Dennis is staying on the line here as well. We have, we have the responsibility, I believe, Dennis, of maintaining the interior of the roundabout. So Janice, you want to talk a little bit about the sign?
Right, so DOT approached me a couple of years ago when they first started the design of the roundabout project. Since the majority of the actual roundabout falls in the town of Guilford, it was given a Guilford project number, and the town was approached for maintaining any landscaping or improvements within the circle because DOT crews limit themselves to just roadway maintenance. And so with that came the opportunity of trying to then take advantage of the project that Brian had started, as Sherry had mentioned, and she continues with also, you know, putting something in the circle that commemorates Guilford or provides a welcome. And that's where we came up with the welcome sign program that was already underway with trying to get them at the, the exit ramps and such. So we did sign that, you know, agreement that we have to maintain that. And the project is nearly complete, substantially complete, and they're making accommodations for the sign to be installed, but we have to pay for the sign.
I think that also diminishes, because this is the way we've done the signs off the highway. They're using, they're calling it hardscape, which is like your car around a 10 by 10, and they fill it with stone, so it's less maintenance in terms of plants and mowing, that kind of thing. So do we have an estimated price on this sign as well, or is it?
Right, so I got a proposal from Autographics, who I believe was doing the other signs around town, and this particular sign's a little larger because of the scale in which it sits, and it's $5,336, I believe, for the sign and installation. The DOT and their contractor is providing the, the holes in the, in the ground for the, you know, signpost to be placed.
So it's not very much. I was going to suggest, I, I know it sounds like this is pretty much complete at this point, but I was going to suggest, you know, a two-way sign, you know, leaving Guilford, entering Branford, and see if Branford wanted to share it or anything.
I was just going to say the same thing, because I, I always think it's a shame when you see a blank, you know, whether we get
Backside, yeah.
Yeah, you, you won't see a blank backside. There, there's landscaping that'll be around the sign. In this case, there was no interest in the other towns having any involvement in the circle. And the subsequent maintenance that goes along with it.
I was going to say, we could just say thank you for visiting and come back, but if, if it's going to be landscaping, that takes care of it, so.
Yeah, it's going to face to the east, I mean, to the west, so that, you know, as you know, you're, you're all kind of, kind of, it's going to face Branford, basically. And you're going to see it coming into Guilford from that direction.
Okay.
So that must be taking the place of whatever other sign was going to be on the, on that entrance, right?
There wasn't going to be any signage there.
We have, we have six signs coming in, and none of them are going to be on Route 1 coming in from Branford. That's nice.
There was a small green sign on the right hand side of Route 1, a little further.
But I, I thought you said that there were six new signs that we've already approved.
Well, those were on the highway.
Oh, different ones.
Oh, I see. I agree. Sure. I see.
This is a busy spot.
Yeah, it is. No, it does. It does. Yeah. I mean, generally, where if we're considering approving use of American Rescue Plan funds, it would be helpful to see kind of globally what, what our plan is. We have a lot of projects, a lot of the capital projects that could use that money too. I know it's not much, but.
We still, we have the last document we have is still the working document. Are in the process of, actually, Pete, myself are in the process of negotiating with Guilford Foundation relative to acting as a, or a sub recipient to do the public side of the American Rescue families, individuals, nonprofits, both social service agencies, as well as cultural, cultural organizations and businesses. So that piece is separate. The document we're still working from is the one that we presented in September with those, listing those projects. What I wanted to do was to sort of marry that process, the internal or the town, I'm calling town expenditures with the capital plan project, which I just got a couple of weeks ago. So you're, you're right. As usual, you're right on top of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve the use of American Rescue Plan funds, any amount of, whatever Janice said, I think $500, $5,336? Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, staying recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Sherry and Janice. All right, item six, American Allegiance Freedom. Would you go up and say?
Thank you. I'm not sure how the logistics is. We're back to old school. I like that school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations for the new members. Most of you don't know me, and one thing is unfair first, is after spending a couple hours ringing the bell for Salvation Army and the tree light, I can feel my nose starting up. I have not been able to get room. It's a hard time talking, which is not my norm.
Everybody's been cold three hundred years. Everybody's a touchless. Not COVID germ.
When you feel it coming on in the cold, you know, so thank you for placing me on your agenda. As you know, the town of Gilbert has many war monuments, and these monuments all commemorate the wars and residents of Gilbert. The parish in those words. But we don't have a global war on terror monument in the town of Gilbert. And the global war on terror, really as long war than Afghanistan and Iraq, and more importantly, is a global war than the US military. The war on terror was, was fought by citizens, persons of power, diplomats, members of the intelligence organizations, they all came together. And the purpose of, of that war was to present our current way of freedom and our way of life. So by way of background, the American Legion during Guilford Post 48 was by Commander Hurst. He unanimously approved funding and installing a monument for the town of Gilbert. And we formed a exploratory committee, which I guess I volunteered to head up.
Missed the meeting, you're the chair.
Mr. Bob Long. Member of that committee. And in the end, we decided we didn't want a war monument. We didn't want a monument commemorating Afghan and the Iraq War or any of the other 80 countries that, that we were involved with fighting the swarlocks. What we wanted to do was have a monument that highlighted the freedoms that we had as a result of that war. A lot of people sacrificed to make that happen. And the tradition of giving this monument to the town is pretty consistent with the, with the post pillars. Last year, our major town giving, you may recall, we, we launched a campaign, a paid for campaign, and we raised over $4,000, primarily from members of the Pope diverting their stimulus checks to the town of Gilbert.
And P4 stands for four pillars?
Thank you.
You said P4. Does that stand for the four pillars?
Four pillars, correct. So we proposed this, I meant with the, with the flagrant, we proposed this, and we needed your support. We also said we wanted to put this, we had considered the town green, but we were drawn from that because the town green monuments, they're quote war monuments, and for the most part, they commemorate individuals, residents from town of Gilbert. And this is a whole different monument, just a much more focused on the freedoms that we have as a result of that sacrifice. And since the war against this country on 9/11 originated from across the water, we felt it was most appropriate to have this monument overlooking the water as you read the, the inscription. So Max, who was very supportive, as I mentioned, asked that we work with the folks at the marina. There's specific location. We met with Mr. Goldsmith, the chairman, who was very supportive. And in the end, we, we identified a location at the marina that would not interfere with marina operations. It's a relatively small one. We downsized the monument quite a bit. The Marina Commission was concerned about striking the view to the public, so we reduced the size of, of the monument so that it's no higher than the rocks that would be adjacent to. We changed the color from black to, we're going to use a granite, the color, stone tree granite, so it matches the existing area. Slide five has the specific location. It's on the southwest corner of the marina on the peninsula at the end. That area already has several benches dedicated to individuals, including guide dogs. So it's very appropriate to have it there and over the water. Slide six shows you some pictures. We made a mock-up to help place it. And we had to reduce the size a little more. There's a bench directly across from this proposed site. And you're sitting on the bench, looking out over the water. It doesn't interfere with the, the view at all. And in fact, it pretty well enhances the area. That area right there has a Foxhills Island sign that's broken and a big black, I guess it's a power box there. I think this probably detracts from that a little bit. The impact of this, as I mentioned, is we want to make sure it didn't interfere with any, any marina operation with the public. And we felt that this location, because of the other memorials that are down there, was very consistent and, and it fit in. And it actually increases the aesthetic view of that particular area. It's, it's a high, high traffic area, a lot of people there, and a lot of out of towers there. That comes in there. I've met people, I've gone down to Denver quite a bit and just to spend time. And it's surprising that, you know, you meet people from not different parts of the country, but different parts of the world. Last year, I met somebody from Sweden, somebody else from Israel. And having a monument at that location to commemorate, celebrate the freedoms that we have as a result of the global war on terror, I think it's highly, it's kind of cool. Who we are and what we are, what we stand for. It's a maintenance-free granite. I'm not sure what kind of maintenance you would do, no more than anyplace else. It's, it's free to the town of Gilbert. You know, all the expenses of the monument and installing it will be borne by the post for it's free to the town of Guilford, you know, all the expenses of the monument and installing it will be borne by post forty-eight. And there was some concern raised uh at Marina Commission meeting, uh or subsequent to meeting, uh I think one of the impact probably have any mail saying that it could trigger PTSD. You know, I haven't found anybody that that subscribes to that. Most of us are well versed with PTSD, and you know, a monument doesn't trigger technically PTSD, so we don't think that's a that's really an issue. This monument, although it's a post forty-eight, it never, it's been strongly endorsed by the VFW here's here in Guilford. The Joint Guilford Madison Veterans Committee has strongly endorsed it, as has APK Charities, which is the Andrew Pedersen Keel charity, the Kennedy Gold Star Mothers, the Military Order Purple Heart chapter in New Haven, as well as other veterans. And I know, Matt, you've received several emails.
We shared those, I think.
So I I won't read, I won't read these, do you?
Well, there was a question I had, and one of them mentions that there had been some dissent. Is that anything we should be aware of?
We can, uh Steve Goldsmith from the Marina Commission, we can talk a little bit about that, but why don't you? All right.
Yeah, the highlights were the the first one in uh on page nine, which is hard to read in your packet, but you already have the letter, is from Captain Senna, from retired Navy captain, thirty years as a as a Navy SEAL. He was one of the first operators on the ground at nine eleven in Afghanistan, who strongly supports this effort, strongly supports having it down at the Marina. And just a a couple quotes is, uh, I believe the cure of the powers of the Guilford water and shoreline should not be underestimated. And to suggest it's inappropriate, that it's an inappropriate place is hard for him to to grasp. And if anybody doesn't understand, he offered his phone number, if anybody doesn't understand the uh the significance of having this type of monument down back on the waterfront. The next letter was from uh Jill Miller, who is the chairman of the Joint Advisory Committee. Two core uh veteran uh strongly endorsing it being at the Marina. Uh, Richard Casey is a uh Marine who served several tours overseas, he's probably the first responder with the Guilford, he does sort of for police department. And he he said, place the monument in one of the most beautiful peaceful places in in this town, has to offer will serve as a general reminder that this wonderful way of life that is usually taken for granted is all made possible by men and women who have answered the call. Helen Pedersen, who was a Gold Star Mother, was in Madison, uh was strongly in favor of this and just could not grasp the concept that somebody would not want a monument at the Marina because it might cause PTSD or interfere with it being a happy place, which was, as I mentioned earlier, was precisely why we felt the Marina was the 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 place. It is a happy place. And there's nothing wrong with reminding the public that they have this happy place because of sacrifices that other people have made, without focusing on those particular sacrifices. And and also in in my opinion, serves as a a teaching point for for kids. I take my grandchildren down there to on the green, and it's just having monuments gives you some way of discussing with the history. And then I don't know if you received this or not, this came in last night from Kevin Brown.
No, there's there's a loose page in the.
That's a loose page in the packet. Kevin is retired Army Colonel, uh several tours overseas, strongly endorsing the uh the the monument and its placement at Marina. Uh, says, I can't think of a more peaceful place overlooking the waters and the moorings. It's a place of peace. And that's what our town and nation needs, is we move forward from these difficult twenty years. So the recommendation from post forty-eight and the request is to a strong recommendation to ask this board to approve uh this monument and its placement at at the Marina. At at the location that Mister Goldsmith, I had worked out would be appropriate.
Fred, thank you very much, not only for the presentations, but your passion. First off, all your service, looking at everyone, hoping better too. Uh, thank you for your service first, but thank you for your passion on this project, and I mean, we work to honor those who have served. You did not misspeak, I fully support this initiative, and I've actually had some conversations with Chairman of the Marina Commission, Steve Goldsmith. Um, as a courtesy, um, I asked that Fred talk to the Marina Commission about the the location. The Marina Commission originally seemed to have supported it, uh but then at a meeting, there were some questions raised, as I think you just heard. Someone suggested that it could trigger PTSD and whether it was the appropriate place to put it there or put it on the green. I'm not sure, my personal view is, I'm not sure memorials or monuments have to always be located on the town green. Uh, I think there's an opportunity, and this is, I think this is really pretty creative thinking to put it there, tie, tie, tied it to such a beautiful spot, different kind of spot than our green, um to to the remembrance. So the conversations I had with Steve Goldsmith, who was actually on this call, was chair of the Marina Commission, um were pretty uh pretty, pretty basic. Uh, this responsibility for the placement of these monuments on town property lies, it falls to us. Uh, and the Marina Commission does not actually have control of the parking lot or that walkway that belongs to the Board of Selectmen, as anything inside the parameters of Marina is theirs. So Steve, would you, uh, would you mind commenting on uh where you where you see it? And before I move off of that, one, I did receive an email, not an email, a text on my personal phone uh over the weekend uh from one of the commission members, Chris Robinson, uh who is fully supportive of uh this initiative and the placement of the monument at that location. Steve?
May I unmute this? Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I, first of all, I wanna make clear that to a member, Marina Commission members were very supportive of the uh nature of the monument or memorial. And there really wasn't any dissent um about uh its value or that um it uh was fitting and to have somewhere in town. The the discussion um mostly centered around its placement and the appropriateness at the Marina. And the vote that was taken was not in any way uh to uh state any kind of negativity about the purpose of the monument um at all. And that was fully supported to a person. Uh, the issue was at the Marina or or not in terms of how Marina Commission members felt. Um, the topic of monuments and uh other ways of recognizing people at Marina has been on our agenda for a while, because frankly, we have run out of space for the typical um ways of remembering people, the benches, the tables and other things. So we've been struggling with how and what to do going forward. Then Fred came along um with this right in the middle of those discussions. So I just wanna make it clear, the Marina Commission was supportive of the nature of this monument. Um, the controversy or the vote was about its placement at the Marina. And it um that that motion to place it where it has been proposed failed three votes to two. Now, our vice chairman, Anthony Capola, is also here. I don't know whether he wants to make any comment about what the discussion was, et cetera. Tony, you're muted.
There we go. Um, yeah, thank you. Um, I agree with Steve with Steve that this um the entire commission was completely supportive of the nature of the monument. And and I really, the discussion that um transpired really was about whether it was appropriate for the Marina or not. I was one of the negative votes, and and I'll get into that in a second, but I will say this, that when um Fred, I don't think, was it Fred that proposed it the first, our first meeting?
Yes.
When it was first proposed, um I in my, I initially thought that it really wouldn't even fit the physical space of the Marina. And um and we have been through this, as Steve had mentioned, where we've run out of space for memorializing people. And in one case, the guide dog. Um, and we've been having these ongoing discussions about what to do, because people wanna use the Marina to memorialize someone that had a particular interest in in the sea or fishing or boating or what have you. But when, um, and I will say that uh the um the American Legion and Fred did a outstanding job in putting uh everything in place, creating a mock-up that we could look at. And uh and try, and even changing the color of it, which uh which I thought was, I actually liked the idea of a black one, but the um I went down and looked at it, um, the the mock-up at the Marina, and when I saw it, I thought it blended well with uh with the surrounding stones, and it was, and it was not obstructive in the view. So the the things that I was actually concerned about um were not, were not an issue. But it did still come down to the fact that should we have a monument of this sort memorializing a war or freedom at the Marina? And is the idea that because in this case, nine eleven, it's started across our shores, which uh most of our conflicts have, does that mean that we should put it at the Marina? That kind of opens up a whole avenue, if you would, of memorializing things that happened to our country uh from abroad. And what I told Steve, as I said, you know, um, I'm kind of riding the fence on this one. Um, I still don't think it belongs in the Marina, but if the commission um votes in favor of it, then I would go along and I would give a favorable vote. And what ended up happening, um, fast forwarding to our last meeting, is that vote without my vote was fifty fifty, it was two to two. So I kind of was the tiebreaker. And based on that, I resorted back to my original feeling that perhaps it would be better located on the town green or somewhere else. It's interesting in the letters that we, and I think the, I think the Board of Selectmen got copies of these letters, I'm not sure, but the letters that we had gotten, um one person mentioned, maybe in front of the police station or the fire station, that maybe there's a different spot that it should go. And once again, I I think that it should be somewhere else, but the real, one of the persons that voted against having it at the Marina wasn't really so much a vote for its location. It was more a vote for the fact that the commission, the Marina Commission, really is not in the place to determine where these monuments go, that that's really more of a more something the Board of Selectmen should do, and that's why we kind of bounced it back to the Board of Selectmen. So I I think in general, there is a um a positive view of that, of it being at the Marina, but for various reasons, uh, one of which is, uh, do we really have the jurisdiction to be able to say yes or no as to something like this on this part of the town property uh or not? And like I said, one of the votes real was more about the fact that we really don't have that jurisdiction. And and just another point before I stop on on the PTSD, because I thought that was a stretch, and I'm a former physician. And um, and I thought that was a stretch, but I understand what the commissioner was saying. She really felt that it goes against what the Marina represents, which really is more a place uh the very peaceful, and people go down there, and I and my wife go down there frequently just to sit in the car or on the benches and and just sort of chill out and it's very peaceful. And would this fit into that environment or to that milliner? It's just uh, it seems to be a little bit opposed to that. Now, if you wanna call it a freedom monument, that maybe might change it a little bit, but I I I do think that just the idea of putting something there does does actually uh change the whole idea of what the attitudes are as people go to the Marina. Now, the bottom line with the Marina is you park your boat there and you go fishing when you want to. So you, people aren't thinking about, most of the people that go down there are not thinking so much about, you know, war and peace and peace being peaceful or calm and and all that, or PTSD on the other hand. But um but, so I don't think, I don't think that's so much of an issue, is what I'm trying to say as far as the PTSD, but it does bring up the thought, and I even mentioned this at our last Marina Marina Commission meeting, is that, you know, what really is the purpose of the Marina? And, you know, what, what is it there for? And what kind of, what do we wanna portray? And um, is this the kind of thing we want there? So that's pretty much it for me.
Tony, thank you very, thank you very much for that perspective, uh, and a little bit of history as to how the board came to that decision, and also your seeming flexibility with almost like you you'd be okay with it either way it went. So uh, I appreciate the the way you represented that. So anybody, yes, Steve?
May I say something else? Yeah, uh, and I think at the meeting, we were talking with Fred about the nature of the inscription even. To give him, uh, several people gave him inputs that an uplifting kind of message uh on the monument uh would also help um keep it uh more in the spirit of the way people view the water there. And not only remembering all those folks who helped keep us free, but also to to say, look, we're enjoying this spot because of what these people did for us over time. And um, I I think that the um the nature of the conversation you and I had was that obviously the Board of Selectmen have the jurisdiction over town property and what goes on it. And I just asked that um, anything of this nature, as Matt had suggested at the beginning, be brought to the commission to do in consultation with the commission. That process worked very well in terms of the fact of the design and placement that was proposed. We worked well with Fred uh to create uh what really fits in very well. So uh, thank you. Uh, I support the monument uh there. And uh, I await the guidance of of Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, I'm assuming that you would be welcoming to input in terms of the specific language, uh, that's.
Actually, as a matter of fact, at the at the meeting, the discussion was one of the issues, probably, why do we need to approve the inscription? That's not our job. That would be the Board of Selectmen, which I agree with. So uh, we, we have two drafts.
Okay.
Trying to do a sort of a focus group. We still have to finalize, right now, the focus group of the two versions, I believe you have one version already, that you did sometime ago. It's 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 a fifty fifty split on which one they like the most, but again, the 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 intent of the inscription is to focus on the freedoms that we have. And, you know, the Marina Commission did make a, one of the members made a And you know, the Marina Commission did make a, one of the members made a very good suggestion that if you can fold in somehow some verbiage that 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 highlights the fact that that you're here at this happy place enjoying this because of and trying to.
Yeah, I I I have uh, no lack of confidence that we the wording will be appropriate and could it can reflect uh, Chairman conference input and sentiments. So.
We bring that inscription to to you.
Exactly. I I think I think that would be a process we approve going forward. That's uh, if if it pleases the balance of the members.
I have a couple of comments, Matt. This whole situation reminds me a little bit of when we uh, topped off the the breakwater and and built that walkway or whatever. I I think a couple of the speakers were talking about uh, uh, the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen versus the Marina Commission and how uh, the Marina Commission, I'm not going to say primary, but I mean, you know, boating and fishing or or whatever. It it doesn't have to oppose, but it has to work with the rest of the community in the parking lot and the and the use of the area for all of the citizens, uh, you know, including not boat owners. So uh, the parking lot in that breakwater and that whole visible scene, you know, really is is a bigger issue than running the the Marina. I I thought uh, the town and the Marina Commission worked very well in 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 finding a compromise in that walkway or parking area and that worked, just as I think your group has has worked with uh, the Marina Commission coming up with a monument that I think had would would have very limited impact in in views and that type of thing. It is a comparatively low key physical monument, uh, but yet it sends a message that, you know, you're sitting here enjoying this view be for a reason. And uh, I I personally would support it at this location simply because that location i- is greater than the Marina. I mean, as a as a boater, you know, I appreciate, you know, boating and and all of that type of thing, but you know, that that parking lot in in that view i- i- is much bigger than just the Marina. And I I would support this location. The only other locations, uh, I I support this location because I think more people will see it and be become more uh, uh, of a statement. I don't think people are going to go down there for the monument, but when they're sitting in the benches or in their car or walking and enjoying the view, you know, it it it's there and it can remind some people and then it could be a teaching moment for their children or whatever, just as it it reminds me a little bit of the the, I think it was the World War Two one across from ages there on Woodfield. I mean, it's a similar monument where it's low key, it's there. And if if somebody wants to avail themselves of it as an educational opportunity, it's there, but it doesn't smack you in the face type thing. And then as far as other locations, I mean, the police department, you know, the other location obviously would be Chaffinch, and I think we just got to keep Chaffinch a secret. It's just, I mean, it's, that's my opinion of Chaffinch. You know, that's our little golden secret in town. You know, and and there are other places, but I I I do think that the way you've been able to work uh, through the design of this to me just reminds me of the walkway. I mean, that was controversial in in the beginning too. But I think it has turned into a plus and and that was a compromise. And I think this is, uh, so I I would support it.
I'm strongly in support of it. It sounds beautiful. I think it'll really enhance our town. And the the care and considerateness of the whole process, the whole decision making process is really, really impressive. Thank you.
I was going to say almost exactly that. It's clear that that this group and many, many people that you represent uh, work extremely hard, personal effort, financial commitment. And just overall valuable uh, contributions to the community. So thank you, everyone. And I really do, uh, I think this happens to be the location for many of the reasons that have already been touched on. I'm very interested to see the actual language. That's obviously one thing. It's not in the presentation. I'm glad to hear that's coming and being worked on. And the concept generally though of is is you've laid out a very eloquently of acknowledging the effort required to maintain freedoms. You know, it's not just been since nine one one, it's been going on the entire, uh, you know, history of this country. Uh, so it's important, never forget that. Thank you.
I I don't know if I can say anything more than what has been eloquently said, but I agree with everything and experience. And when I was the director of the library, we had issues getting very emotional about um, monuments and remembrances for people after they died. And I, what I think about this one is it's it's small, it's it's tasteful, and it's going to um, represent everyone without taking over the environment. So I I think it's a very excellent solution and location.
Saying it to your point, uh, this is, I don't mean to to throw a blanket on it, but you have to go find this one. This monument is not going to, is not, you're not going to see it when you pull into the into the Marina parking lot. Okay? It's, you know, it's when you're taking a walk down that area where you want to go sit on that bench. That's when you're going to find it. So uh, at the sake of, you know, saying it might not, you know, it it might be uh, more visible in the middle, but I think the where you're putting it, the tranquil place that people would actually walk down to as opposed to pulling their car up next to it. So so I I again, I'm I'm fully supportive of this and would would like to move it forward.
Get a motion?
Yeah, uh, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Ask a question before we
Certainly, certainly.
And I think Steve already uh, alluded to this. Can we before you start cutting granite or they start cutting granite, can we look at the inscription?
Yes. Yes.
No.
We we will continue the spirit of cooperation between Marina Commission, uh, this group of activists and the Board of Selectmen. So we will share that language and Fred has already committed uh, to to that kind of cooperation. So.
I, Matt, one, just one more thing. I I thank you for that. And and one of the reasons for the sensitivity is uh, that when uh, people come to the Marina and there's some obstruction to their view, people coming in with cars, whatever. It's it's we that hear about it, even though the property is not our jurisdiction. And uh, that is why there's that sensitivity historically. I just wanted to put that point there, and that's why the Marina Commission takes the view very seriously, even though we don't have jurisdiction over it. Uh, we're the ones proximate uh, to the issue if one exists.
Yeah, I agree, Steve. Uh, you should you should rest assured that you're not the only uh, uh, office that receives complaints about that. Uh, ironically, I've had in the last six months, at least two residents complain about the sign that says no rock throwing, uh, because that obstructs somebody's view in a certain parking space. So uh, your point's well taken. Uh, we're not going to make, we're in a business, we know that we never make everybody happy. But as long as we have a majority, we're we're okay. So, but thank you for that point. Anything further? We call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, stay, useless, hearing none, motion carries. I know you have to. I think there's there's significance to this decision today. Tomorrow, we celebrate the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, the attack on Pearl Harbor. Uh, where so many of your fellow uh, soldiers and sailors and Marines and I don't think the Coast Guard was out there at that point, but maybe they were. But I I to me, I think it's significant that we are making a commitment yet again to honor those who have served for our freedom. Thank you very much for all your work.
Uh, thank you for your time, patience. Remember we have a ceremony down at the Marina tomorrow.
Yep. Reese in the water.
So again, thank you very much for your consideration, your time and all that you do.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, item number seven, Water Pollution Control Authority receives a report from the Water Pollution Control Authority on future plans. Tony and team?
I don't have any capacity.
Now we're
I've got a hand out here, not enough paper up here.
Well, it's all these devices are supposed to make the paper.
We're happy to get the hard work you played through it.
From the guy, from the guy who clicks up and gets his newsprint ink on his fingers every day. Thank you.
So Joe's going to present this, but what you're looking at the Health Department's responsibilities, which is that's item twenty four for the WPCA responsibilities. And I'll just say that I've been on this board since for fifteen years. You've been on it for over twenty, twenty.
Yes, Larry's been on it since Guilford was still using outhouses.
This is a battle.
Yep, really.
With staffing on the WPCA. Dennis is just overwhelmed. Uh, so Sonya's come in doing a great job, the big surprise the last couple of years. And so we really need somebody to take care of this stuff. And if you go back, among other pages, you'll see the beginning of the Health Department responsibilities. So Sonya's got her hands absolutely full. We're missing the stuff. We're missing out on a lot of stuff we shouldn't miss out on. Joe can go into that.
Everybody just introduce yourselves for for the record.
Yep.
In what capacity you're here?
Just names.
And I'm I'm Barry Stratton.
John Nugent.
Sonia, Director Health.
Lawrence Marsick, WPCA.
All right, I'm here requesting that the Board of Selectmen make available in the calendar year twenty twenty two funds to hire a person who can work under the Board of Health umbrella on the water pollution issues that are before the town. Because of COVID issues, the past twenty two years, just about all the resources within the Board of Health had to be redirected for public safety and welfare. This was and still is the main priority. That being said, the town of Guilford has been under a sewer avoidance program since the seventies. Reports are made available to Connecticut DEP showing pump out data of existing septic systems as well as operational data for alternate waste treatment facilities. The town is responsible for systems that have a flow rate of less than seventy five hundred gallons, while the state is responsible for systems over seventy five hundred. Rumor has it that the state may push this level higher and have the towns handle anything under ten thousand gallons. You may or may not be aware that up to twenty five percent of the state employees are going to bail out between January first and July first because of change in pension plans. We already got information that DEP, DEEP be decimated. So we can't rely upon them as much as we used to. In twenty twenty two, we would like to address the issue of the required escrow accounts that are insufficient and underfunded by the communities by community septic systems. You may or may not know that in the town of Guilford, if there's a shared sanitary system, we require an escrow account to be set up so that if there's a failure of the system, there is money there to take it. It's not the town's responsibility. If you have the failure of a septic system on a single family house, a forty potty will eliminate that problem. What do you do if Quantapock Hills has a problem? Think about that. That's why we have this escrow system set up. Unfortunately, over the past several years, this systems have been drawn down. Uh, HOAs have taken money out of it and they shouldn't have because its only intent is for the sanitary systems, not for reshingling the roof or anything else like that. And there's like twenty five systems right now in the town of Guilford, and we want to address this issue. We want to send a letter out to the HOA telling them that they have to update the system. They have to make it current.
That's just not to interrupt you, but uh, a couple of months ago at this table, we had a very similar discussion over a project. It was release of uh, escrow funds. Uh, and there was some substantial conversation about how how is how is the town actually protected uh, against exactly what you just said, where there is not sufficient funds in escrow accounts. So we we have some familiar.
Yes, town is the custodian of these accounts, essentially, yeah.
So so if if the town is a custodian of accounts, how did we let them take money out from roofs or something that was not?
They shouldn't have. Yeah.
They should have authorized that.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to address that problem.
Which suggests that somewhat of an order of some of those accounts at some point, right?
Yeah. Notices will go out to HOAs that they will be provided with the required information to assist them in updating these accounts. We also intend to continue to mail out notices to homeowners that their septic tanks must be pumped out every five years. This simple mandate has eliminated many problems in past years. Failure to meet the DEEP mandates for sewer avoidance could mean that we we would have had to hire an engineering firm to do ground well test pits throughout the town with multiple analysis of the water. This could lead to a yearly expense in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's important to properly maintain these subterranean systems to avoid non-contact pollution of our water resources. Old Saybrook, East Lime and Clinton have been cited for issues and they are under the control of DEEP. We don't want to go that way.
Before you go further, can I just clarify something? At the beginning, you said the the board is looking to hire someone. I mean, this would be someone in the Health Department.
That's correct. We want an additional personnel in the Health Department.
Rough title of the person. What are the credentials of the person you're looking?
That would be determined by the Director of Public Health and HR.
Okay. All right, we can get that on the back end if we hear some more. Thanks.
Yep, yep.
And obviously, we don't have a dollar amount.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, yep. Uh, it's usually less costly and more proactive to prevent pollution than correct the problems caused by the pollution.
No question.
That's my closing comment.
I know. Good, thank you. Understand the problem.
Matt, I know we've uh, you know, made some advances over you know, re- regarding digital or computer programs and that type of thing. I mean, a lot of this seems like it's fairly mechanical. I mean, we may need a person to get to that point. Uh, but it seems as far as permitting and escrows and things like that, I mean, i- if there's anything that I would think that would benefit from computerization, this would be a shining example. I mean, these kinds of things, they should just be automatically generated.
If you'll notice that a pile of paperwork that he passed around has pictures of files sitting in boxes.
Well, that's my point. I mean, I can appreciate the need for personnel to get to that point, but I I would think any person that we would hire, that would be a strong part.
Those files are a year old and the reason why is that no one has the time to put them in.
Yeah, and that's been the ongoing problem that we've tried to address over there. But I would think any person we would hire, that would be a uh, high priority in their job description.
Exactly.
It doesn't have to be a sanitary or anything. It just has to be a person who can input data who can help out with the walks out in the field to see if there's septic coming to the surface. Um, and uh, there was uh, there was a list of items that they can do, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing to deal with a failed system that that requires probably a somebody certified in health and all of that guy's stuff. But a lot of what you've been talking about is administrative.
Yes, there's a small portion of it's field walk, just to walk over and if someone calls up or or you know areas that have poor septic systems, to go over there and see if there's any smelling.
But if you take amount of the administrative.
Her car, right. It's that simple. The best test is, is there water coming up? Is it spongy? Does it stink?
And 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 is it, do you have any projection of how many hours this would require? Is this possible that this is a part-time position?
Not initially.
Well, we we originally had a full-time position.
Yeah.
But it got lost over the years. I mean, back to two thousand budget was a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And this year's budget was zero.
We have.
So so it's going to be somewhere between there, but it's not, we don't need someone who's a registered sanitary or anything. You just need someone who um, is willing to do some walking in the field and to do a lot of input in terms of the computer.
Didn't the town secretary and actually do that at one point? Wasn't that part of their responsibilities? That's my, that was my understanding.
What what was the comment?
Didn't we have a Didn't we have a resource in that office, which was the town sanitary? This sounds an awful lot like.
We have a town sanitary.
I know we do. This sounds an awful lot like what a sanitarian should be doing other than just inspections. Am I? Am I missing something?
Can I comment? So what we consider as an environmental tech, quite a few towns that have been dealing with these issues have a tech. Which means it's a lot about coordination of communication. The sanitary surveys is more preventive. So we go out there if there's a system failure as a health department and there's some separate bullets on both. On the health department side is the review of septic systems, repairs, soil testing. So it's individual, does the individual each lot like a B one hundred A for change in use or a system repair. The WPCA tech is more along the lines of going out to make sure to prevent, to report those areas that may have failure. That looking at areas to see if there's a population density of a commercial growth.
Can I just ask a question between? If we enforce and get up to speed, the process of every five years having a pump. Isn't it the responsibility of the company pumping it to report?
You do, those are paper copies that you'll see in the one of the papers that he passed.
That's my point. I mean, if we were able to get that program up to speed. And then also include in that process, you know, reacting to negative, you know, test results or pumping results. It seems to me that, you know, it's still, I'm concerned about, you know. Your desire to have somebody that they can go out in the field as opposed to, to me, it seems if we got the administrative side of this up to speed. It would take some of the pressure off yourself having to do the inspections because you wouldn't be having to be doing the administrative stuff. Plus, you know, it just seems like this is something that is very administrative. And when we got programs and that type of thing up to speed, this could become fairly mechanical.
I think we're going to need something a little more formal than what we have here today. A job description. Estimate of the number of hours and then also whether or not, consideration whether or not we could use a consultant at the outset. We have invested significantly in the health department. The last year and a half was more than appropriate because of what we are facing, right? One of the conditions of adding that staff was post-COVID, if there is such a thing. We would evaluate the need, the continued need for those resources, right? So I think this is, I greatly appreciate you guys bringing this to our attention. It is an issue that we're going to have to deal with. So this is not the first time I've heard it. Somebody has said, given me some heads up that this kind of stuff was on the horizon. And I think we need to start to look at this somewhat holistically. So I want to, I want to look at this with consideration as Charlie just said, can we hire somebody to come in and do the paperwork cleanup? Step one. Two, can we hire somebody to do the analysis of these? Escrow accounts, that kind of thing. Or would that be the same individual?
And a recommendation going forward to how to set up a program.
Exactly, exactly. And how we can tie this into the permitting system. The, our current permitting system, which has the capacity to handle this. That's one of the things today.
I mean, this type of thing could be connected to our taxes even.
Possible.
Yeah, certain factors and.
So, so at least I am wholly supportive of providing the resources to address this issue. It is an issue that I think we knew was on the horizon. We didn't realize it was as significant when we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. So I think Sonia, homework's going to fall onto you to try to identify what kind of resource, how much time we're going to need on this.
Would you recommend that we sit on the fact that we shouldn't mail out a letter to these community systems as of yet? Because we will not have enough personnel to handle the calls that are going to start coming in?
I haven't had a chance to read what the.
Well, there's twenty five systems that we've.
I don't see, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't send that out just to alert that.
Okay.
Of their responsibilities under the.
Well, not like that. By sending out the letter.
You may solve some of it.
Well, not that. It, we can assess what the situation is. I mean, if twenty five of them are perfect, that's one scenario. Twenty five of them.
We have the records. We know what they have, what money they have in your account. We know.
Above my point, by sending it out and expecting their response, you know, it will be black and white at that point. It won't be subjective or anecdotal.
I'm sorry to cut you off. I would say, I'm going to, I gotta just flip the question back on to the commission. I mean. You guys got to give us a specific recommendation of which way you want to go on that.
Yeah.
We've got a twenty five minute presentation. It's helpful. We understand this problem.
Yeah.
But in terms of specific policy direction, the whole point is. Flip that around. If it's urgent, we'll address it promptly as possible.
We just want to come in front of you just to make you aware of the problem and we'll go back and do our homework and then come back in front of you.
Fabulous.
You know, that's what the intent is.
You have our attention.
So with the intention is, we really don't want. We want to have our eyes out and teeth crossed in case someone comes and knocks on our door.
Not to complicate this further, but I see Janice is still on the line. Janice, any interrelationship between this initiative and the stormwater management? The MS four stormwater management requirements of the state?
Not really. I mean, sewer avoidance is a completely separate issue, I believe, at the state. And the stormwater management and coordination with the health department is mostly related to. Discharges that are illicit in nature, either directly connected to, you know, catch basins. And sometimes overflows may be a stormwater problem if they make it to the system. But if they're just, you know, contained on site, then it's truly just a health department sanitary issue.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Thank you for bringing.
You need somebody to play us a paper.
All right. Item A, Green Committee Parks and Recreation. I think we have, there's Rick, smiling face. Have we got a pun for us today, Rick? Clever.
Well, I know that sometimes you have to table some things that come before you, but I hope you don't bench this idea. Okay, you invited it, Matt. I had to do it.
Absolutely. All right, we're considering taking possible action on purchase of six benches for the Guilford Green. For those who may recall, this was one of the American Rescue Plan. Approvals that we made several, several months ago. So Rick, go ahead.
So just, just a quick introduction. The reason we came, the Green Committee came up with this idea of more benches is that. With, you know, in the last year and a half with COVID, you know, you see anytime you look out your window there, Matt, or walk by. The green, you see people's groups of people sitting in circles, bringing their own chairs and, you know, a lot of. Community gathering of individual small groups, you know, just showing up on the green and just kind of hang out and chat. So we got thinking, why don't we think about putting? Some benches across from each other, you know, one on one side of the sidewalk, one on the other side of the sidewalk, so that people could. Sit and not have to bring their own chairs, you know, four, five, six people could sit there and enjoy each other's company, talking back and forth across the sidewalk. So the Green Committee. The Green Committee liked that idea and they approved. Going with six benches that we'll put them in areas where there aren't benches now because these would be, they'll look different from the ones that are out there. And, you know, wouldn't look real great having the new bench, you know, against an old bench. So. John Cunningham and I are going to work on where these might go. We already have some ideas we talked about. But in the bench that was selected, there were several that John did some research on and the one from Victor Stanley that I, I think, did I send you folks a picture of it?
Yes, we have.
So we have that and that's the one that was determined is the one that the Green Committee wanted to go with. And so, and Victor Stanley is also the company that those metal trash barrels came from. So. Not that it has to match, you know, that, but it is the same company.
Although, Rick, to that point, which is helpful, actually. How have those held up in terms of weather resistance? Has any rust breakthrough? I mean, this looks like some sort of powdered metal finish, I'm assuming. And I'm assuming the point of this is that, you know, that that surface is going to hold up for a fairly long time. So how have the, how the receptacles held up?
They've held up, except one that got hit by a plow, I think, one year, but other than that. You know, they've been, they've held up okay, you know.
How long have they been there? How old are the trash?
Boy, I got to say at least ten years, at least, maybe twelve.
No, I don't, didn't, didn't, no, it's when, when your department took over the removal of trash from the green because we were unhappy with the. Private provider and I think you had to buy the trash receptacles at that time.
Well, yeah, the metal ones have been there for a long time. We bought the plastic ones.
They have the plastic.
Okay.
Yeah, and the recycled ones that are out there, that was a Girl Scout project. I think they called the Gold Award. It's like the Eagle Scout level for Girl Scouts. One of the girls bought those a number of years ago, but the trash barrels have been there longer than that.
How is the, how is the compacting trash barrel working? Is that still in an operation?
Yeah, yeah, it's working well. Actually, I'm trying to get quotes for maybe another one. Maybe just the trash part, not, not the recycle part. But I haven't gotten that back yet to maybe consider another one or two of those on the green.
The quote says that the slats are to be determined, you know, speaking durability. Why, why is that not specified?
I'm sorry.
Said the slats say to be determined and it's not.
It probably recycled versus wood, probably.
Well, exactly. Who decides? Doesn't that affect the price? And I was surprised to see that as an open item.
Yeah, no, it would be, well, it would be the plastic, yeah, I'm trying to look at the quote here. Anyway, the player would be go with the recycled plastic. It's durable. It doesn't, you know, you never have to paint it. There's no maintenance on it.
So it makes a pretty good, that should be nailed down.
Yeah, wouldn't that affect the price? What, what you, what's chosen? Seems odd that.
The quote, the quote itself under unit cost. Thanks, Sue. I'm sorry to be stealing your thunder here.
No, fine.
The unit cost is one thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars per bench. And then it was like a four hundred dollar shipping fee. So the total was nine thousand nine twenty three and when I.
Right in between that, right above where it says freight, it says slats to be determined.
Yeah, well, I'll look into that, but I.
Okay, there you go.
You're loud.
Projecting.
I don't know why, why that is, but John Cunningham got this quote, so I'll check that with him.
This is, can I ask, is John Cunningham on paid staff or is he doing this as a volunteer?
No, John is the Vice Chairman of the Green Committee.
Oh, I see. I didn't realize that. Okay, great, great.
And this is, this is really a Green Committee project, not Parks and Recreation, but on the Parks and Rec staff on the Green Committee. You know, so I'm making a presentation for them.
So they signed off on the benches.
John Cunningham owns a local company.
I know.
Okay, so, but he's done some, I think, can't think of that word when it's free, but it's another word.
Pro bono.
Pro bono work for the town and other times too.
Yes, great, great.
Rick, at the sake of raising eyebrows here, has, is this enough based on what the Green Committee would like to see in terms of benches on the green? You know, I think COVID obviously has highlighted the lack of the number of benches that we have. What, is there an expectation that we may be doing more of them beyond these six?
You know, it's possible, Matt, in the future, as we replace the benches that are there now, if we, we would probably want to make it more. Uniform and go with these, you know, more of these. But I think this point, I think six is the number they came up with that they'd like to start out with anyway. I hate to say start with, I don't know if we're going to come back in a year and say, let's get more, but we, they thought six was a good number.
Okay.
Are these attached? Are they set in concrete or are they?
Yeah, yes, there'll be footings. My staff will have to do that. We'll put the footings in and they get bolted down. Yeah, the other thing, I just want to go back to John Cunningham for a second. If you, some may not know him, he's the landscape architect. So he has a good eye for these things and this is one he thought was a good bench. It was one of his recommendations. And as I said, the, there were several others he looked at in the Green Committee. This is the one that they selected.
And one more thought, if I could, this is kind of a landscape architect question, but if we're addressing the fact that people are getting together in groups and circles. Is there a way to do this so that you don't have benches on two sides of the sidewalk? It just doesn't really seem conducive to a group of people getting together.
I was thinking that because when, as you mentioned, you see people on the grass with their chairs in kind of a semi-circle.
Yeah.
Or a circle and.
They don't mind the side.
We may need more benches on the sidewalks, but I wonder if a conversation pit, quote unquote, or something could be considered.
Yeah, again, we can talk to John about that and the Green Committee, but, but the proposal was to have it. The approval was to have them on either side of the sidewalk. But I think, you know, if you want to leave that up to the Green Committee to decide where they want to put them, I don't know if that's their choice or the.
I think, Sue, if you think, if you think about it. And people are really honestly trying to talk to each other and they're sitting opposite each other. People are walking by and there's a lot of ambient noise. You know, out there in the daytime. It seems like there could be a better way to place the benches than across from each other on the sidewalk. Parking Rec Commission is going to love us.
I'm just making a note, you know, I'll talk to John about that, see what he thinks. But yeah, I think, you know, we could certainly have a conversation about that.
Quite honestly, short of putting these types of benches at right angles to each other, I don't think you facilitate any easier way of conversing. Facing, you know, facing each other. I just, you can't make a circle. You know, you need four or six of them to make a circle.
Yeah.
One big large gathering.
To their point, it might be something in the future the Green Committee could take a look at, the developing. A conversation area versus, you know, strictly lining.
More benches is going to help no matter where.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we trust you'll take that back for further discussion with the Green Committee, but these, these will probably go in in the fashion that you've indicated.
Yeah, for now. And the other thing, if you just want to make a note is when I first, we proposed this for the ARPA funding, the estimate was twelve thousand dollars. So we're, we're about two thousand less than that.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Rick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, consider and take possible action on a resolution authorizing the first election to sign the two thousand twenty one Homeland Security Grant Program. Region two memorandum of agreement. I think you all have that in front of you. This is Department of Homeland Security in Demus here in the state of Connecticut. This is perfunctory. I think we've done this a few times.
But the resolution isn't specific to that grant. It's like a wide open resolution. It doesn't seem right to me.
Pete, Pete, are you there? Or Trace?
It's, it's just the format the state, the state sent. I just copied that and paste. It's the same one we've approved every year.
That doesn't mean that we can't add something in to say that it relates, I mean, instead of saying. To execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town, it could say any and all documents in connection with the grant.
Well, town government, if it delivers to the state of Connecticut, the Department of Emergency Services.
I don't have the document with me, but, but the one should, it should say Department of Homeland Security on it. The resolution.
But that's not, it's not important whether it says that or not. It's about what we're resolving. And the way it's written here, it's completely open-ended. Execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town.
All you need to do is. This is, this, this is authorizing me to sign any documents that the state of Connecticut. Deep would require. I think that any and all documents which it deems necessary or appropriate is deemed necessary or appropriate by DEP. My reading of that sentence is correct.
But it's not, it's not specific to this grant, which is our, which is what we're operating on, which is what we're going to go to authorize.
Yeah, my suggestion would be seems that it seems necessary. Yeah, my suggestion would be seems that it seems necessary and appropriate to execute this grant. Something to that effect. At Susan's point, you know, six months from now, with this resolution, you know, we could get quite a bug pumped out or something.
Well, maybe we want to give ourselves that.
Well, you know, I I didn't want to say it out loud, but.
Pete, um.
Maybe just add the line of in in, you know.
So.
In accordance with this grant.
Tracy, you said the state required this wording or said, or we were given this wording by the state in terms of how the resolution is approved.
Yeah, I I will review it, but it's the same one every year that that you approve and that um, the state sends us.
State sends us the resolution itself.
Yes, I just put it on our letterhead and insert Anna's name and the Guilford Board of Selectmen.
What's the uh, what's the drop date date on this being submitted to uh, Homeland Security? We know.
I'm not sure. I'd have to check with Charlie.
I think we can prove it's subject to just making make that one clarification and the uh.
I would think so.
You know, and I really, I think if this address is such documents, that you you say something to the effect of what Sue said, such documents related to grant XYZ.
Yeah.
Uh, the doc, if you read the other document, it says due date in big red letters, um, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
That's what I would suggest. They just modify the motion to to make sure the resolution that we are signing references the specific um, Demus uh, grants and and then related material.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think we're behind that. It is it is just the tiniest bit open ended there, so.
It's about hundred percent open.
So I'd make that motion. Okay.
I second that.
Yeah, it does. What's the world here to talk? Because this is a this is a resolution that the state required us to do that this way. If we're gonna modify it, we have to go back to the state and ask them if it's okay to modify it prior to signature. So this this authorization came directly from the state? This this.
And in the first paragraph, it says we can't modify. Like, it says, um, and that this resolution has not, according to Anna White, has not modified, rescinded or revoked.
So that's referring to the resolution that we're gonna make, which is gonna be specific to the grant.
Matt, I believe it's referring to the original regu- resolution, and you're just making a statement that nothing has changed since then.
No, it's referring to the resolution we made today, December sixth. And I don't think any of us should, any of you should be expected or should would be able to kind of read this thing and digest it here being put on the spot, but I'm sure I'm sure that there's a way to to just insert whatever wording is necessary, and the word that wording here does not preclude us from changing it.
Pete, um, have you had an opportunity to look at this? Let's see if it helps beat him away.
It keeps referring to documents.
I think they're probably talking about this MOA attached.
That's why I think we gotta go. You know, if this resolution is specific to those documents, so that might be the resolution, Susan.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, uh.
But I don't see where in the resolution it says anything other than buy such documents.
No, no, they did in the second resolve, according to the second paragraph, does make reference to the Demus.
It says any and all documents. Doesn't say what documents, any at all. I mean, that's what I'm saying, you know, six months from now, they send us another document, and technically we resolved to let Matt do whatever he wants.
I think it would be really simple. I mean, as you said, the first resolve down way near the end, um, which which it deems to be necessary or appropriate in order to effectuate or whatever the blah 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 grant.
The attached or whichever.
Or any any other memorandums related to this grant? Yeah?
Yeah.
Or even just the the attached memorandums. Just put that in there, so it's only the attached, only this particular.
Yeah, but that that actually works counter to what I think the purpose of this thing was, which is the state somewhere along the way.
Could add another document. Okay, yeah, you're right.
That's exactly what you're doing. Yeah, they're giving themselves some wiggle room.
Yeah, I guess Pete's got earnings keep this this morning.
Yeah, Pete, um.
Just looking at this now, though. What's the what's the question?
Question is, there is concern that paragraph two on the resolution is too open ended, that uh, it allows uh, the town to or requires the town to sign, uh, to enter into any uh, other, uh, doc, assign any other document related.
Any and all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so we do this type of resolution for most of our grants, and um, I believe what it's asking us for is for us to deliver documents in order to finalize the grant. They may ask us for checks. They may ask us for some documentation to actually finalize the grant, not at, I don't believe it's adding new documents to add new grants. Uh, so every resolution we do for grants says we authorize the first selectmen, sometimes the finance director, to execute this grant and to provide any documentation related to the grant. So maybe you want to say that documents related to this grant, but the doc, we need to have the authority to send DEEP documents related to this particular grant.
If we add to this grant, that that's that's all we're trying to say is that
Mm-hmm.
we're willing to to resolve this for this grant.
Right. My point is, we can't really dictate what documents, because we don't know what we might be.
And that's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to limit this resolution to this particular grant or issue.
Well, if there are, are there multiple grants that this application covers? I I think this larger memorandum of agreement probably allows us to access a variety of funding vehicles, so to um. About related to grant funding?
Yeah, but that that's no, we're trying to spell it out for this grant.
What I'm saying is, I'm not sure this is a grant, but and again, I think this is what allows us to get access to a variety of grants.
If if you look on page four of the second document, I don't know if this is helpful, but item I, I guess, says agreement regarding the use of federal homeland security grant funds to support regional set aside projects. Maybe that's what you're looking for.
What what we're looking for is something that ties the resolution to this MOA.
Correct. That's what I'm doing. The the MO, I'm reading that from the MOA.
I know, but the resolution doesn't have anything to do with the MOA as it stands.
I know, I'm suggesting adding that wording to the MOA, I mean, to the resolution.
Okay. I think that would do it.
Related to the MO to this to the related to this MO to the attached.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying.
I think that safely gets you there.
But we will have to check with the state.
State says, state says no, then we'll need to have a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, but they won't say no for another month, so.
Yeah, that's part of the problem.
And this is.
By the meantime, we'll be done. And we're gonna pass the resolution with it.
And my and my bet is the guy in the basement who reviews these uh, things will never read the resolution.
Yes.
That's that's what I'm trying to say. If we pass the resolution with the change.
The specific authorization that came over, it sounds like that's almost like a form that the state uses for all sorts of circumstances. That's my understanding. Okay, that's one of the, and 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 we're not changing the MOU, we're changing our authorization to follow the MOU. You guys are saying you gotta check with the state. You have, not gonna second guess what goes on there by any means, but we're saying, we're gonna do everything the state says we gotta do under the MOA. We're just making reference to that.
Yeah, well, yeah, your first statement, we're gonna resolve to go along with the MOA.
Do you want to uh, like, uh, as to the resolution, I agree, um, to refer to the memorandum of agreement, but do you want to add that in instead of subtracting anything out? In other words, say that uh, may enter into with and deliver to the state the memorandum of agreement and any and all related documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. I don't know if there are other documents that will follow.
Yeah, we're leaving it that we we don't mind giving them the documents, but as long as it's the documents for this MOA.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to, I just wouldn't want to limit, I just wouldn't want to limit it to only the memorandum of agreement if there are other, you know, follow up docs.
Right.
Okay, I I'm gonna move that we move this uh, based on you working it out with Pete and the state and getting it done on time.
Okay.
If if you like, you want me to read what I think it ought to say that that first involved?
Yes.
Resolve that the town of Guilford may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. The appended memorandum of agreement and any and all related documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate.
That's fine. That does.
Yeah.
Yep, that's good.
All right.
That's what my resolution says.
I'll second that. All right, any further comments or questions? All the questions, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, okay, let's uh, start the rapid fire here. We're not going away. We got this affordable housing thing. Um, yeah, let's. Okay. All right, discuss take possible action to set a public hearing date of January third, twenty twenty-two, to enact an affordable housing taxes at our program. This is a program that we've been chewing on for uh, for a while, uh, and this is the current iteration, which uh, Pete, if I'm not mistaken, how do I how do I lose in connectivity? It doesn't make sense.
Oh.
There was.
I got it.
Yeah.
Before that said broadband with um, week or something up there, so I don't know if that has anything to do with you.
Broadband would be getting outside of the building, as wireless is inside the building, so.
Well, we're just setting the public hearing date.
Yeah, we're setting, yes. Um, so I think this gives everyone the opportunity to review it during that time, so.
The third.
Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Now, is that enough time?
That's a regular board meeting, as Susan.
Actually, yeah.
The 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 holiday for New Year's Eve is gonna be Friday, right?
It is.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
Saturdays. All right, is there a motion to set the public hearing day for January third?
So moved second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? Item eleven, consider take possible action on the election of the member who shall preside in the absence of disability, the first selectman records of town charter section three dash two B. Lou, you graciously filled that role last time. Uh, I would nominate Lou to to continue in that capacity.
I'll second it.
Any any uh, comments or questions? Little thanks for volunteering. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody. Uh, that motion carries. I have it all. Discuss take possible action in appointment of clerk to the court of selectmen in accordance with town charter section three dot five. Uh, Tracy uh, has indicated a willingness to continue in that role, uh, and so I would nominate Tracy to continue to fill that position.
Second.
And I need to kind of comment your questions. Tracy, speak now forever. Hold your peace. Oh, you didn't speak quickly enough. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, discuss take possible action on the reappointment of pre-warden for the town of Guilford in accordance with section twenty-three dash fifty-eight of Connecticut general statutes. Uh, that responsibility has been and hopefully will continue to fall on Kevin McGee's shoulders. Uh, and I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, item fourteen, consider and take possible action on appointment of town council in accordance with town charter section five dot five. Uh, Pete has uh, just recently demonstrated his capacity by getting us getting us through that issue, so uh, I'm gonna, I would I would nominate Pete Barrett to continue to fulfill that role.
Second.
Second, any comments or questions? Uh, here, now let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss take possible action on appointment of the flood and erosion control board in accordance with chapter forty-two of the town code. And as you uh, will note, it's uh, this board, uh, Fire Chief Charlie Herschaff, the town engineer Janis Plaziac. So, uh, assuming there wants to continue in that current role, uh, that I I make that motion. I'll second it. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on proposed twenty twenty-two meeting schedule, uh, and we'll uh, I'll have a question afterwards, but I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Charlie, uh, or Sandy, any issues with some of these meetings, particularly, I think, the Tuesday meetings, which occasionally conflict with your responsibilities with the Guilford Savings Bank?
Um, I just looked for February, um, it it would normally, when we move it because of that holiday um, anyway, it happens to be the fourth Tuesday, it doesn't conflict with the bank, so you don't have to make it an afternoon meeting on the twenty-second of February, which normally we would have requested.
And we can always modify it.
Yeah, but I was looking at the calendar.
Just back to January for a sec. Martin Luther King, um, that one, um, I would respectfully request that it be in the afternoon, not in the morning on the eighteenth.
In January eighteenth?
Yeah.
Good.
Anytime after twelve o'clock, right, Charles?
What the what works better later in the day, so it doesn't.
I don't care. Workers on four o'clock.
But I like that, but whatever.
Four works. Better than two.
Yes.
Okay.
Then we can adjudge in another stuff.
All right, so. So the January meeting is is if we have.
Well, the only problem with four o'clock with department people, will they still be around, or should we make it like three so we get a leak?
Of course, okay, they could.
Yeah.
Could hang around.
Okay.
Torture that.
So the uh, schedule's been adopted, adapted, adapted, it's been modified to four o'clock for the eighth, the eighteenth. Is there a motion?
Somewhat.
A second. Oh, yeah, second. Sandy, you should be seconding that.
I'm sorry, second.
Uh, any further comments, questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointments and resignations, uh, seventeen dot one, act on a recommendation to move Ben Brown from alternate to regular member on the Economic Development Commission for a term expired November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Some would.
Second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Seventeen dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint Ben Robbins as alternate to the Economic Development Commission to fill vacancy for term expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'd say like to second that.
Oh, you wanna make the motion?
It's okay, it's fine.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, seventeen dot three, act on a recommendation to appoint Barbara Hargreaves to the Human Rights Commission to uh, fill vacancy for term expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Some would.
And a second?
I'll second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, seventeen dot four, act on a recommendation to appoint David Neff as an alternate to the Harbor Management Commission to fill the vacancy for term expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'd like to make that one.
And I would like to second that. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying with us, or motion carries. Uh, seventeen dot five, act on appointment of Ken Garmen to the Green Committee as a member uh, at large to fill vacancy for term expire on September thirty, twenty twenty-two. So not to monopolize it, but I would very much like to make that motion, and I'd like to second. Help me. Uh, let me try my eyes all in favor. Eighteen, request for uh, use of town property, eighteen dot one, act on request of the Boy Scout, Merb Troop four seventy-one, replace the sign on the green advertising its Christmas tree recycling, taking place to seven forty-seven from January twenty-third, uh, sign placement, uh, twelve twenty-one to. Uh, sign placement, uh, twelve twenty one to January fourth. Is there a motion?
Some would.
A second.
Second.
Uh, Janice, one quick question on this. Uh, were they disposing of the trees up at the? Were they collecting them up at the waste transfer station?
In the past, they had been holding this event at the waste transfer station. I've made the request that we consider having them relocate to the. Brush and leaf facility area just prior to it where there's a nice open area that Public Works has. Recently created with some clearing and repiling of things.
Okay. Thank you. And they and they are aware that that will be the.
I have not heard from them at all yet this year. I don't know if your office has in terms of setting up a place.
I have not yet, but certainly we can reach out to them.
Okay.
All right. Uh, let me try your minds.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Uh, eighteen dot two, act on a request for months to man action to use the green for its holiday gift drive collection taking place December twelfth, twenty twenty one. Is there a motion?
Some would.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, we try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Eighteen dot three, act on requests from the community nursery to replace the sign on the green advertising its little folks fair taking place June fourth, twenty twenty two. Sign placement, uh, five twenty one is. Fourth, is there a motion?
Some would.
A second?
Second.
Second, it'd be nice to have that taking place on the green again.
Yeah, great.
Uh, we try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose standing because there is very non motion carries. Committee reports, I will make one report on the. On behalf of Sandy's committee. Remember.
As we're getting on with the development plan.
Otherwise known as. The developer, the work team arrives and has asked for an extension. To on some of the obligations that were in that were in agreement. Uh, largely because of delays at the state in terms of the funding stuff, so. Attorney Barrett and I have going back and forth on that and then reached out to Steve Beddick, who you may recall is the attorney we use on that. And it's it's appropriate to to provide those extensions. Any other correspondence of what we received? All right, old business. Anybody have anything under old business? Uh, I do have one piece as as it relates to the moratorium on marijuana. I've had some conversations with the outfit Zen City, still in some of the social social analysis for us, social media analysis. Uh, they have largely a result of a series of surveys that we did in the community for. The Safe Streets Task Force. They have developed and or acquire a company that does full blown survey work. So I've asked for a proposal from them relative to it. They can. They've got some technology that can. It's largely social media, internet based, self cellular based. That allows them to 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 get this survey out into process. So they're providing you a proposal, which I will share with you. I think this might help to inform our decision on whether whether or not we make that moratorium permanent or.
So just just to follow you. The idea of getting a survey out is we all agree and Zen City is the company that would do it.
Yes.
And you've learned about them through the safe streets people.
No, Zen City was a software that we've been using for a couple of years to do.
Okay.
To do some social media analysis largely, but they were most they were most ready. Hope they can form the safe street task force through a much more rudimentary survey tool, which was largely. Put out on webs, our websites, our our social media sites and it was also filtered out through the community itself, so. This is a more scientific. Survey tools that they have they acquired.
When our moratorium is out, which I guess is get June thirtieth. We have to act one way or the other or forever lose our chance to have have it or not have it is.
No.
No.
Uh, our our moratorium expires on June thirtieth. If we fail to act, it becomes legal.
Becomes legal to open a business in Guilford?
Yes.
According to the zone.
My thought about the Zen City thing, I mean, at some point in time, this will no longer be valid. But if if it's a survey that's relying on social media and phone based stuff, we might be leaving out a portion of our population.
Right, and they 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 claim, and I'm not doing it justice, I'm going to get a document which explains, they call it statistically valid based on the profile of your community. So they have some tools that say, okay, we've got, we need to get so many responses from people between this age and that age. All right, it's it's the way it's the way that they start to identify those folks, right? Because that that data gets filtered into the survey. So there may be if they have, you know. Got seventy percent of the folks are in the in the, you know, twenty five to or the eighteen to thirty five range. Well, that may not necessarily be statistically valid. That just may reflect how, you know. The the that group of folks in their in their perspective.
Okay, all right, good. So they're addressing a scientific.
Yeah. Uh, I think it's it's a statistics course I never took in college. The survey statistics. Uh, new business, anybody? Public forum. Anyone in the public wishes or just support in public forum? Uh, okay, twenty four, consider to take possible action on land purchase detective session will be required. Gary's still here and Kevin is here. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some would.
Some would.
And the second. Okay, I have one. You have to cover.
Aye.
Uh, and we're inviting Kevin McGee, Pete Barrett, if he opts in and. Gary Cowley in for that particular thing. Mitch, Sean Cosgrove is here. And I think Phil, I don't know, Phil Johnson is going to be here. This is for our ten thirty call. Is it?
Yeah, I was gonna try to make I try to move it to eleven if you want.
Is that is that possible, Sean? I apologize. Is that possible? Yeah, I want to, yeah, we're here. Well, let's get it done. Sean, if you, Mitch's office is just down the hallway on the left hand side. Think we could take Phil with you just to. With him.
Well, Matt, you want to wait till eleven or you want to try now?
Uh, I've got to finish executive session, so let's.
Matt, I wouldn't I wouldn't anticipate this is going to take a long time.
See, we can do a quarter of.
Okay, we'll do.
All right. So we. Uh, is there a motion to come out of the executive session?
Some would.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, we try your minds. All in favor? I oppose standing because there is very non motion carries. Uh, we have discussion relative to a land acquisition. Um, and at this point, I still think we're going to identify the property, but is there a motion to authorize land acquisition? We need to enter into negotiations for this piece of property at the price point that was shared with us during the executive session. I'll make the motion along those lines. The second?
I'll second it, but I just want to remind everybody that before anything like this is finalized, we do have the public hearing.
Yes, right, absolutely.
Right, it's about a town.
And we'll go to town.
Happy. That's right.
So the specifics will be public.
Yeah, we're yeah, we're just, you know, getting to that point.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Any people's hearing, no motion carries? I'll let it turn the motion to.
Some would.
Second.
Can't believe it. Four years we did it. This is the first start of our our next one.
Thank you.
I know. You mentioned four years.
Doesn't seem like.